We got to call the meeting to order if that clock is wrong. I got 7:06. So first up, this stands for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
For the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point, we'll open the floor to any citizens' comments. No? Okay, moving on to new business. First on the agenda is the adopting of the tentative FY21 budget.
So in your packets, starting on page one through page 26, you have detailed line-by-line item analysis. Vinnie and I are prepared to do a presentation for you tonight, but that's in there just for public record and your reference. And we'll head on over.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask, can we ask questions throughout the presentation or would you prefer that we wait till the end? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to kind of bring everyone up to speed, remember that on December 18th, we presented some preliminary numbers for you. As promised, the numbers have changed. So tonight, what we're presenting to you is our tentative FY21 budget. And this is the leadership, the leadership team's collaborative recommendation. Knowing that this is the beginning of the process in terms of the interaction with the school committee outside of subcommittee and here for the public, so we're really looking forward to your feedback and direction at the end of tonight so that we can go back and work with the team to do any necessary refinements. So we have several objectives for tonight. As I mentioned, the first is to share the FY21 leadership team's tentative budget proposal.
And to clearly articulate investment proposals in FY20 budget process.
We really want to start the conversation with the school committee and the public. There will be two opportunities for public hearing between now and the final vote. And so tonight, we really just want to share with you as the educational experts what we see the needs of the district being and the impact that would have on the budget over last year's budget if they were all to come true.
And in addition, we would like to refine our FY21 budget to maximize available resources and respond to the ever-evolving student needs.
So again, for folks who are just joining the budget conversation, we want to provide a little background and context. Back on July 18th of this current fiscal year, we received an FY20 preliminary budget forecast from the outgoing Assistant Superintendent of Finance that was projecting a $638,000 deficit. So you can imagine that the very first few weeks and months of my time in the district was spent trying to deeply understand what was the root cause of that deficit. And then with Vinnie coming on as the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, together, we were able to really assess sort of the current reality of our fiscal state over the summer months.
So on October 16th, we presented this forecast to you, which was a more accurate reflection of the forecast at the time. You can see the main drivers are our out-of-district tuition. We forecasted approximately $433,000 in additional tuitions that we did not budget for. The main difference between this forecast and the one presented on July is the savings in the administrative line. We had salary reductions and we reduced an FTE, which resulted in approximately $170,000 savings, which reduced the overall budgeted forecast deficit to $309,000.
And one of the things that we've been trying to be really transparent about throughout this whole process is that the needs that are driving this budget deficit are, continue to be needs today and will continue to be needs in FY21. Those needs don't go away because it's a new fiscal year.
So at the time, in October, we presented to you three items that are continuously in motion. The biggest one always being is out-of-district tuitions. There are currently still 12 pending placement cases that could change at any time, resulting in anywhere from a $600,000 to an approximately $1 million increase. And the second biggest item was health insurance. In October, it was the beginning of the school year where multiple new employees were hired and hadn't elected their health insurance yet. We have gotten all of them back and we have approximately 15 more employees enrolled today in our health insurance than we had budgeted for FY20, which has resulted in an additional $110,000 of additional expenses for FY20. And of course, always employee leaves are forever ongoing and maternity leaves as well.
And paternity.
Paternity. So in addition to the $309,000 forecasted in October and the $110,000 that we have recently discovered in health insurance, we have a combined total of approximately $420,000. And next week's school committee meeting, we'll be doing another forecast update through December, so these numbers will again change. Because of this deficit, we have implemented a curtailment in an effort to conserve spending. We continue to monitor student needs and the impact on the budget. And we will be requesting school committee to make FY20 budget transfers at the next meeting as well.
So again, just reminding everyone, what does this mean? When we talk about having a deficit in the current fiscal year and those services still being needed in the next fiscal year, that means we're starting FY21 with a known 2.3% budget increase, just based on those student needs alone. So now we're going to really get into the tentative budget overview that we have that backdrop in our minds and we are understanding how we're sort of entering into the budget development process. And as you know, I always like to remind us of the foundation that all of our work sets upon. When we think about the mission of the district, this is where we're asking ourselves why we exist. What is our purpose? What do we come here every day to do? The vision is who we're trying to become. What is the school district's vision for the future? We also then align our core values and you know, because you've been a part of this work with the leadership team, that this is ongoing. We're doing a reassessment right now of all of these things. While also then having really clear, specific, measurable, attainable, rigorous, time-bound goals that help us ensure that we're continuously improving year after year. And I like to start with this as a reminder because a lot of times we can get lost in the dollars and cents and percent increases year over year. It's really important that as a school committee and as the educational leaders in the district, we keep this at the forefront of our mind and we align our budgetary decisions to these things. So our current mission states that the mission of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District is to educate our children to become young adults who are of good character and demonstrate mastery of knowledge and skills needed to be successful members of our global economy and engaged citizens of the 21st century. As you all know, the expectations for workforce and life in terms of demand on our young people is changing at a really rapid pace. And that means that we also need to be adapting and improving our instruction continuously here within our school district. Our budget is a key lever in ensuring that we're constantly meeting those changing demands and making sure our students are as prepared as they can be to be adaptive, agile, successful citizens. And so one of the things that I heard very early on in coming to the district through conversations with leadership team members and community members, school committee members, staff, was that the budget process, they wanted to have a budget process that was much more transparent, that was much more open and where there was more collaboration. And so we've strived really hard this year to create just that within our budget development process. It's been a multi-phase process where every single member of the leadership team has been included in doing line-by-line analysis, articulating needs of students, talking about potential new investments. Even when we know that they may not all come true in this fiscal year, we think that it's really important to constantly be having that conversation in a pre-K to 12 way, so that we're not just thinking about each individual department or each individual school. We're thinking about the whole system and trying to find as many efficiencies as possible while also maintaining our effectiveness and continuously improving. So that part of the process has been well underway since October and continues to happen. Each time we come together as a leadership team, there's another little piece and component to that process. So in putting together the FY21 tentative budget, we had several goals that were sort of overarching and big picture that we kept in mind. The first always is to develop a needs-based, student-centered budget. And so we talked and we'll remind you again about the difference between level services and level funding. That's been a big part of our conversation and really honing in on what is it that our students need each and every day so that they can realize their full potential. We've also been trying to prioritize our resources pre-K to 12, so doing that deep line-by-line item analysis and making sure that we're putting our dollars where we're going to get the biggest return on investment has been part of our budget goals. Providing the required and appropriate service based on student needs to encourage the best possible outcomes for all students. And that's intentionally bold because we're thinking about, you know, who are the students that we're serving really well and who are the students in our district we could be serving better? And that's a big part of our conversation and making sure that we're budgeting properly for the needs of our students. Responding to our increasing enrollment demands at pre-K, K, and 1 in first grade. So as you know, we had to add a seventh kindergarten class this summer. We also in November added a third pre-K class. Those kids are all going to move up a grade. And looking at our enrollment, historically, kids typically tend to stay in the district through their pre-K to 12 experience. So we anticipate that those enrollment needs are just going to shift up to the next grade. And so maintaining those existing programs, but also ensuring that we're thinking about student safety along the way. And that includes health needs, facility needs, curricular needs, social, emotional needs. And then expanding our early intervention supports and services. When we start to look at, you know, what are some of the root causes of our increasing numbers of students being placed out of district or our students needing specialized services and instruction? We know that for every dollar spent, the earlier on we spend those dollars, the bigger return on investment we get. And I think, don't quote me on this, but I think something like the return on investment for preschool is for every dollar spent, you get like an $8.92 return on that dollar. So we're going to talk a little bit with you about how do we better support our students earlier on to get that bigger return on investment? And then how would we continue to protect and support our largest investment, which is our human resources? So what needs to be in this budget in order to ensure that our employees are feeling supported? So with all of those goals in mind, we also have several budget challenges. These should all really feel, sound familiar to you. Our intent is to present it in a variety of ways, knowing that it'll resonate with different members of the community depending upon how it's presented. So as I mentioned before, we have those unbudgeted needs that leads to a 2.3% increase rate from the gate for, over FY20. We have contractual obligations. That contract was settled. This is the last year coming up into that contract. And in this year coming up, FY21, we've added a lane change. So there's implications to that in addition to the step increases in the cost of living adjustments that were previously negotiated. That equates to a 4.9% increase right from the gate and that's part of our level services. Again, adjusting for the increasing enrollment at pre-K, K, and 1. And then responding to the developmental, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students that are requiring both specialized services and/or possibly specialized placements. We have aging facilities that are in need of consistent routine maintenance. So that's one of the challenges we have in terms of increasing costs. And then more needs and investment proposals than we're able to support. In this leadership team recommendation, you're going to see some new investments that we're recommending, fully understanding that some or all may not be able to make it into the final budget, but we really feel that it's our moral and ethical obligation to present to you what we think the needs are to start the conversation. There are several proposals that didn't even make it into the budget, but we'll let you know which ones those are as well.
So what is level service? Level service is not level funding. If we were level funded, our budget would not increase or decrease over one year to the next. Our, as Julie said, our COLAs, steps and columns together accounted for approximately 1.7 million or 5%. If we were level funded, we would have to cut services in order to come up with the money to cover the contractual obligations. So level services would ultimately result in an increase in funding, so therefore it's not level funding. So a level service budget allows the district, for the most part, to maintain existing services and personnel, as I previously stated. A level service budget also includes line item review, resource alignment, and resource allocation to meet the current needs of the district. A good example of this is in FY20, we reallocated a TA salary from the middle school to the Winthrop because the needs were no longer needed at the middle school, but were at the Winthrop school. So again, just to carry you through level service, we've broken it up into three major categories. The biggest one being our contractual obligations. These items include, as previously stated, our COLA, excuse me, our increase in health insurance, our increase in our contractual steps and lanes. In addition, our Essex retirement appropriation was increased by $62,000. These contractual obligations alone accounted for approximately 5% of the increase. In addition to that, our current services came in at approximately 2.3%. So these are unbudgeted services in FY20 that we are now providing that will ultimately roll over into FY21. So right out of the gate, we are, we have to come up with approximately a 2.3% increase just to continue the services we have today into next year. This includes $406,000 in unbudgeted special ed tuitions and additional $107,000 for special ed transportation. Also in FY20, as most of you know, we added a new seventh kindergarten class, a new third preschool class, which is accompanied by not only a teacher but two TAs. And we've also increased our SLP position by approximately 1.5 FTEs or $12,000. And lastly, the third category is our annual rate changes. This just has to do with a contractual increase on our transportation for both general ed and regular ed. In addition, $16,000 for our AEDs and an increase to utilities. These are not all of the annual rate changes, but just the biggest categories within it.
The other thing, two things I'll point out here. You see SRO on here under our current level services. This is something that is in FY20, being funded through the town of Hamilton. And FY21, that becomes district responsibility, but still same service, increase in funding. And then also in the first category, under contractual obligations, there were, what we're basically doing is reconciling the accounting of the IDEA grant. This is something that has been in our management letters, I believe, over time. It causes the increase from last year to this year to look higher because we're accounting for it, but then it's offset when we get into the revenue side of things, so just...
The IDEA grant accounts for approximately a 1% increase over FY20 as well, but does not have any effect on the net assessment to the towns.
So here's where we start to build that level services budget. And again, remember that this is no new services. It's all existing services that are happening right now. And it also includes that line-by-line item review. So we had one-on-one meetings, at least one with every principal or department head. Sometimes we had second or third meetings depending on the need for clarification. This is where the bulk, a lot of the budget work takes place. I would say approximately at least 100 hours of leadership team time, not individually, but collectively, probably at least 100 hours for Vinnie and I. But this is where all of that is happening. So it's not just as simple as us saying like, roll everything over and add X percent increase. There's a ton of work that happens in this part of the budget. And so just to outline for everyone this tool, the top line is showing you gross expenditures. And so you see there in FY21, that's what is proposed. You see the change in dollars over FY20 and then you see the percent change over FY20. Down below, we then take into consideration all of our non-tax revenues. And then we look at the school portion of the tax request, which is the gross less the revenues to get your net budget amount. Then you have your dollar change and your percent change. And so we'll focus here on the percent change as we sort of build the budget together so you can see what we're recommending, but you can also see if you were to start to eliminate some of those recommendations, what would be the impact on the percent increase. So that's level services. But we don't just stop there. Before we start looking at the current needs, we then say, who's retiring? Do we know of anyone who's planning to not return? Is there going to be any breakage or attrition in the incoming school year? And fortunately and unfortunately, we don't have a ton of turnover that we know of today. A lot of our staff are planning to come back next year, almost all. So that's a good thing for our kids to have that veteran staff here to support them. It doesn't give us that opportunity to maximize the breakage like we were able to this year with all of the turnover that happened in the district. So it does decrease the gross and net increase slightly. So now we're looking at a net increase over last year of 9.71%, about $2.8 million, just for level services. The next step in the process is to say, what are the current needs of our students? Because we have incoming student needs, we have some students who are in the process of possibly being evaluated or assessed and we might know that they have newer, different needs. And we're also looking at our whole entire pre-K to 12 population and saying, how could we be doing what we're... How could we be meeting the needs of our students more efficiently and/or effectively? And then we come up with what's considered required services. So these are things that we have to provide because the law requires us to be compliant in that way. This would also include any mandates and any safety asks. And so here in this part of the budget, we've... And so here in this part of the budget, we've included all of those new investments. And so part of what, they're, they're new, but they're required investments. And so in here, we have a projected four-hundred-plus thousand dollars in additional out-of-district tuitions. That's those twelve pending placements that we talked about earlier in terms of item in motion. And then this also includes a district BCBA, which is a board certified behavior analysis. We're currently contracting out of district for that service. We know that it would be more cost-effective, more cost-efficient and more program-effective for us to have our own BCBA here in the district all the time, serving our kids. And really for this, about the same amount of dollars that we're spending to contract out for just about nineteen hours a week, we could hire a person in-house. And so that's one of the required investments you see here. We also have in this line, a slight, an increase in a language-based teacher. So we're adding one-point-oh FTE here for that position. We've had really great success with our elementary language-based program. We know that some students are being placed out of district because they're looking, parents and students need a, a more sub-separate placement. And so we're looking to expand our offering so we can have that here in district and folks don't have to go out to get that service. And so with that required investment, that brings our net budget up to twelve percent. And you'll notice that the gross is lower than the net, and that's just because the expenditures are outpacing the revenues. Ideally, the net would be lower than the gross, but that's not the situation for us this year. And so now here's where we start to get into the new investment proposals. So as a leadership team, you all know, every member of the leadership team had the opportunity to submit a formal written proposal of a new investment that they thought would better serve our students and/or meet a need. This is something that you've all been hearing about for a number of years, from my understanding. We currently have seven kindergarten classrooms, and there's only one certified teacher in that classroom. DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommends that there's one teacher and one TA in each kindergarten classroom, and class sizes are twenty or lower. We currently have kindergarten class sizes of twenty to twenty-two. I believe there might be one class of twenty-three right now, and we do not have that, that full-time TA support. So this became the number one new investment, pre-K to twelve, out of all of the investments that we assessed as a district. And so the ask is for seven full-time kindergarten teaching assistants. The price tag on that is about three-hundred thousand dollars. And you can see the impact that that has on the gross and the net overall budget. The second new investment priority for the leadership team was to bring in to the district a full-time licensed social worker to help with social, emotional supports across the district. And this would be someone who would be providing district-wide social, emotional support, including consultation with teachers, collaboration with teachers and teacher teams, direct services with students, while also connecting families and students and staff with various community resources. So one of the things that we know is that it takes a village to raise a child. We have them for a big part of the day, but families need help connecting to extended services in the evening hours, on the weekends and throughout the summer. And this would be an expert who could help have those confidential conversations and help connect families to resources, which we believe will give us a greater return on our investment in terms of the supports and services we're able to provide in the day. And so we're costing this position with salary and benefits at about eighty-four thousand dollars. Again, we don't know if a person hired would accept benefits or not, or would need benefits or not, but the smart thing for us to do is to budget for it, just in case, so we don't end up in a situation like we're in this year. And so that brings the net ask to a twelve-point-nine percent increase over last year. The third priority investment is to add some after-school academic support. We already have a late bus at the middle school and high school every day. And we believe that if we, we could provide additional supports to students who have academic gaps and/or just need supplemental support in the afternoon, that we would be able to help improve outcomes for kids overall. And we already have the transportation there. So it's really just sort of maximizing an investment that we already have. The seven thousand includes a stipend for a teacher to support the students during this time and provide that individualized supplement and also snacks because we know that after the school day ends, kids are going to be hungry. I don't know about you, but when my daughter comes home, that's the first thing she wants is food. So we want to make sure that kids are able to access that support when they're here. And then this last investment here is where we draw the red line. This is taking, this year we had a point-five-five SLP, which is a speech-language pathologist in the budget. We've had a really hard time filling that position in that part-time way. And we've also learned that our need, the students needing services is greater than point-five-five. So earlier you saw as part of the FY twenty unbudgeted needs, we've increased that to a point-seven FTE. We're still having a hard time filling that position. We've had it posted and reposted a number of times. These positions are really in high demand. We believe that adding a point-three to it, it'll make it a whole, full-time position, a one-point-oh speech-language pathologist. And we would also be looking at specifically recruiting a person who would be able to provide some assistive technology support as the person in that position currently is leaving the district in mid-January. And we're, it's very common for these two positions to sort of be coincided. So we think that increasing this to a one-point-oh would allow us to maximize the opportunity that we have to bring someone in and be able to better meet student needs. And so this is where the leadership team chose to draw the line, knowing that this is a really big percent increase and knowing that there's going to have to be a lot of conversations from here on out as we look to refine our numbers before, on our, on our way from tentative reading to final reading. So the ask is three-point-nine million dollars for the FY twenty-one, or yeah, three-point, yeah, thirty-two-point-nine for the FY twenty-one school year. So while you're thinking about that, I'll share with you a little bit about what's not included in this budget. So this is what this recommendation, recommended proposal would allow us to do. But that still leaves a lot of unmet needs. One of the things that did not make it above the red line, if you will, was to purchase bathroom cleaning machines that would allow us to better sanitize our bathroom, increasing the overall health of schools. And you see the price tag there for that. Assistant varsity coaches across the board. We have some that are, some teams that do have assistant varsity coaches, some that don't. And we were looking to improve the, the equity across each team. And I'm not going to go into great detail on these things unless you have questions because the leadership team is really going to dig in and talk more specifically about the implications of not funding these things. We also are looking to re-establish a broadcast media program at the high school, and there's some specific specialized equipment that would be needed to do that. District-wide, we believe that having a flex custodian would allow us to better maintain our buildings, keeping our facilities in better shape, but also cover absences and things of that nature. We were also looking to add some additional professional development monies so that we could implement a BRIGHT. And this would be a program that is used for students who are returning from hospitalizations and things like that. Again, trying to say, how do we best support the whole child in the district? Lips training, again, we have a lot of students who have language-based needs and need language-based services. And this Linda Bood Mel, Linda Mood Bell program is something that would allow us to better meet their needs right here in our district, so they're not having to go outside for those services. We crossed out the new biotech, the equipment for the new biotech class because as you'll see on the agenda tonight, the Ed Fund has already approved that as a grant, and we're really excited about that. We've deferred replacing the soccer goals. We've also deferred providing stipends to our intensive learning program, teaching assistants. They really, the demand on that job is much more intensive than other teaching assistant jobs. And we're looking at the idea of differentiating, differentiating the pay scale because we're asking them to do more demanding work, and it's really hard to fill those positions and retain folks in those positions. The OPEB investment, again, this is, you all know the story behind that. Last year, we've decided this year, you know, in the grand scheme of all the priorities that we have, that that falls lower on the list this year. There was also a request to provide the advanced responsive classroom training. This is part of our morning meetings in every single one of our elementary classrooms. And they've, they've had basic training, and they were looking to progress to the next level with that. For the middle school, we really have this big question about what's our long-term plan for one-to-one devices? But we've decided to defer that for this year. And then lastly, there was a request to have a district-wide elementary and high school health teacher that could allow us to divide health as one course and P, and physical education as a second course. And that's really to respond to what we're seeing in our students in terms of, you know, mental health needs, social, emotional needs, behavioral needs. And that has been deferred for this year as well. Again, next week, in the workshops, the principals and the directors are going to go much more in-depth. But we wanted to just kind of get you thinking about some of those things that are not in this budget.
So this chart is designed to give you a overview and help compare the FY nineteen, twenty and twenty-one budgets. As you can see, to maintain all level services with a few new investments, we would need approximately twelve-point-four-eight percent increase in our operating budget. This in return would result in a thirteen percent net operating increase assessment to the towns. So in your school committee packets, there are, I believe, something like twenty pages worth of count numbers. All of those added up gives you your first line on the slide here. After that, you remove your expense offsets. These are things that we generate revenue from. For instance, our pre-K classrooms, some pay tuitions. And then from there, you also remove your revenues like chapter seventy or your state reimbursement. After everything is removed, you're left with the final net operating budget, which is what we assess the towns at. In addition, many of you already know, per DESI requirements and per our regional agreement, you are to vote in the tentative and final budget based off the DESI chart of accounts. Within here, there are about nine categories that divide up the DESI chart of accounts. I'm not going to go through them all, but you can see the biggest drivers are behind tuitions and other teaching services. The other teaching services include the pre-K classroom and the additional TAs. That's why you see such a big increase. In addition to that, the IDEA grant comes into play here. So in total, again, we're looking at a twelve-point-four-eight percent increase. So the prior one was the DESI chart of accounts. This one is by site or by DAC, as we call it. This is basically just a breakdown of the school location and department. So amongst the five schools, you also have the athletics department, the central office, district maintenance. Fringe benefits also includes fixed charges. You have your special ed department and the technology. This is just a different way to look at it and more how we maintain the budget when we meet with each stakeholder. So again, this, this slide is designed to give you a visual of the total thirty-nine-point-three-million-dollar budget. As you can see, the biggest grouping is our personnel. This is salaries only. This does not include any insurance or any social security or Medicare payments that we also match. This is literally just the salary costs accumulate up to sixty percent of the entire thirty-nine-million-dollar budget. So when you, when you take it into consideration, most of them are in, all have individual contracts or union contracts that are already pre-negotiated before the year even begins. And sixty percent of our overall expenses are tied up in these agreements beforehand. The next biggest increase is, as we've discussed before, is out-of-district tuition. I'm sorry, the biggest grouping out of the thirty-nine million. The second biggest is out-of-district tuition, followed by our fixed charges. This would include health insurance amongst other things like workers' comp insurance or just your general building liability insurance. This, this pie chart actually explains the overall increase. So out of the twelve-point-four-eight percent increase, it accounts for approximately a four-point-three-million dollars. Out of the four-point-three, this helps you delineate which group makes up the biggest increase. So out of here, the teacher's salary line represents the biggest increase of the four-point-three million. They represent approximately twenty-one percent of the overall four-point-three million. So that's how this chart is designed to read. The second biggest, as we keep saying, is out-of-district tuitions. So here's where you get into your revenues, as I spoke through before, your offsetting revenues. So again, the school committee packet you have is the top line. This accumulates up to approximately thirty-nine-point-three-million dollars. From there, we list out all our expense offsets. We're forecasting an increase in school choice as well as a preschool tuition because of a result of us opening the third classroom. We also will be receiving additional revenues, and we are projecting that to be approximately twenty-three thousand. In addition to that, we have the special ed grants, as we stated before, is three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. This is represented within the expense categories and also in the revenue. That's why it has no effect on the town assessment. It is more just an accounting informality. In addition, as our special ed expenses increase, so does our circuit breaker. That's why we are forecasting a moderate increase there as well. After you remove the expense offsets, you're left with thirty-seven-point-four-five million. This is what the motion will be to vote on tonight if you approve, or if not. It is based on the thirty-seven-million dollars. Once you come to this number, we remove all of our reoccurring and operating funding sources. Like I said, this is your chapter seventy and your state transportation. Many of these numbers come right off our cherry sheet that the State Department issues to us. We are seeing a decrease in Medicaid reimbursements throughout this year. The State Department is becoming a little more stricter on what we can actually apply for reimbursement for. So in addition to a decrease this year, we are projecting a decrease next year. That is the only operating funding source that we are predicting to go down next year. We also have an uncertified excess and deficiency balance of approximately two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. This is the amount that is in excess of three percent. Once you add all these up, it comes to approximately four-point-four million. You remove that from your thirty-seven million, and you're left with approximately thirty-two million, which is an increase of roughly thirteen percent over last year's net operating budget. Again, this is the amount that we assess the towns. So here's the thirty-two-point-nine million at the top. And then you apply the regional agreement breakdown per school, per town. At the moment, Hamilton makes up approximately sixty-three-point-eight-six percent of the overall budget, and Wenham accounts for thirty-six-point-one-four. This is a change of roughly point-one-nine percent from last year. So these are the capital project items that Tom Geary, our director of maintenance facilities and operations, presented to you back on December eighteenth. Listing out here is approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of capital projects that Tom, myself, Julie and the Capital Finance Committee put together. The biggest one is safety and security infrastructure improvements for approximately three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Amongst the other items here are studies on the elementary school facilities and an update to the athletic campus improvement plan. These items, we would be requesting to, for a debt exclusion in the debt service budget. I believe on the next slide, I've included fifteen thousand dollars for, for those projects on the previous slide. In addition to the fifteen thousand, we already have three, two bonds. That is the Cutler Roof and the. Buca Boilers. In addition to that, the Winthrop Sprinkler is currently a ban, and in accordance with last year's budget, we are predicting a $125,000 principal paydown for the sprinkler project. All these projects added together comes up with our debt service assessment at approximately $413,000. And again, this is applied the same way the operating budget is, a 63.86% share to Hamilton and a 36.14% share to Wenham.
So, just to remind you where we are in the process, tonight is the tentative budget vote. This really kicks off the process. We then have a lot of work to do in subcommittee with the Capital Financial Planning Subcommittee to analyze what will stay in the budget and what may need to be adjusted. Those meetings are all listed here. We do have a joint meeting coming up on January 29th, and this is when we will come together with both the Town of Hamilton and the Town of Wenham to talk about all of our needs as one community and really determine if we need further meetings from that point. Then we do have those two public hearings I mentioned in the beginning of our presentation. The first one is on Wednesday, January 22nd at 6:30, right here in the multipurpose room, and the second one will be on Wednesday, February 12th before the final vote, same time, same place, right here. And then town meeting is on April 4th. Next week, for folks who really want to get a deep dive into what's in this budget and what's not, in addition to what is some of the return on investment of FY '20, because that's a really important conversation for us to be having, the leadership team will be split over two nights, and they're going to give you about a 20-minute presentation each. You'll hear two presentations have time for questions. Here, two presentations have time for questions. And our hope is really that then, after the 15th, the community, the school committee, our FinComs, our Board of Selectmen, our town manager and town administrator, and the whole community at large will have a really deep understanding of what the needs are of the school system for FY '21. So, tonight, in accordance with the regional agreement, we are asking that you vote to adopt this tentative budget, knowing that there's still opportunity for changes before the final budget approval on February 12th. We are within the 30 days that the regional agreement calls for, and so we've prepared a motion for you that includes the numbers and the language that would be read if you so choose to do that this evening. We can answer any questions before you do that, or you can make the motion and second it and then ask questions.
I'd just like to ask a question, and I ask this with all respect, because we do represent the people of both towns, Hamilton and Wenham. And I know you've done tons of work on this budget, but do you really feel that you have established a budget that services our students well and as well as is being fiscally responsible? Because it is a huge increase from last year's budget, and you laid it out really well of what we started off with, and I appreciate all the work you did. But just to know that you feel that you did the best you could, keeping in mind all the balls that are juggling in the air, so.
Yeah, I would never in my life think I would be presenting a school budget that has this type of percent increase. I think that it's a lot to ask of both communities, and we know that we have, we're stand-ready to do more refining. We just need to know where the community needs us to go, and I don't really have a strong sense of that yet without having met with either of the FinComs to know kind of what their situations are, what their needs are. But we do know that it's our responsibility to put it in the context of what can our community actually support, and our goal ultimately is to have a successful budget vote. We thought, starting here with what the needs are, while also, you know, not including everything, we're not coming and asking for every single thing that we know we need, but just what's critical and what we think is going to give us the biggest bang for our buck, if you will, in terms of return on investment. Because I believe that's part of our job as well, is to be good stewards of the tax dollars and not just keep putting out fires. At some point, we have to turn the corner and be more proactive and start to solve the right problems, because this isn't sustainable. I also think, I'll add, and Vinnie, you can certainly jump in, I think that this is a correction year, is how, what I would like to call it. This should not be, you should not be seeing budgets like this from here on out. This is not the new normal. As you mentioned, there's a few anomalies here. We're operating in a deficit, and so we have to certainly take that into consideration when you're looking at that percent increase. And the percent increase can be a little misleading because of some of the other things we've had to add in just to correct in terms of the accounting of the IDEA grant. That's a big increase in and of itself. If you go back and you look at what we would, what we're starting the year with, if all of those, if we could say, well, if we didn't have that, if that wasn't the situation, if we had a current budget that was meeting our needs, we would be well within the range that the Board of Selectmen had asked us to be in, which was that 5% to 7% range. In terms of the large increase that we're projecting in out-of-district tuition, that really comes from looking at evidence all the way back to FY '15 and assessing what happens when we do budget what we know in terms of projections and what happens when we don't. And as we know, as you all know, there are some things that we know about, you know, out-of-district needs. There are some things that we know are pending, and then there's all this over here that is unknown, and this budget doesn't account for any of that over here that we don't yet know. So, we're trying to be as conservative as we can while also being responsible, so that we don't end up in the same situation we're in this year.
Yep, so, the, starting off FY '20, we are already in a 3% increase, so all the items that are not included in the FY '20 budget that would be level service in FY ' '21, in and of itself, accounts for 3%. And then when you add on to that the IDEA grant, which is approximately 1%, right there, already out of the gate, we're at a 4% increase. So, if you were to take that off the top, just using round numbers, we're, you know, we're down to more around 8%, so depending on how you want to look at it.
And I think too, now, I think also, and for the community to understand, is this year in the contract, we've added a lane, which we went from bachelor's in the past to master's 30. We now have a master's 15. That was a choice that was made, you know, three years ago, and now's the time for that to come to fruition. So, the timing really is, you know, it's kind of like the perfect storm, if you will, of all of these things coming together in one fiscal year, but there are clear explanations for everything. It just doesn't, I don't know if the community can, you know, if that's enough for the community to support this. That's where I would kind of lean on you as the experts in terms of that.
Thank you. You go, no, I had my, you go.
Yeah, sorry. You answered one of my questions about sustainability, what happens in the following years. Is this, yeah, this can't be the new norm. The slide about capital projects, is that included in this number?
No, the capital projects would be a debt exclusion, so it is not.
Okay, very good.
15 grand of it is included, but that's just to acquire the ban that we would go out for.
Okay.
So, in short, no, it is not included.
Okay, perfect. Two other quick questions. What happens if the, we don't vote for this tonight?
You'd be pushing out the dates, so we would have to come back with a new one, and everything would be delayed.
Trying to do it then with 30 days, okay.
And I think we could run into a challenge also with the regional agreement, because it has to be, the final vote has to be 75 days prior to town meeting. And so, I would just remind you that this is the starting of the process. Like, in an ideal world, I look at this as the leadership team saying, here's our recommendation. We think that's our, you know, moral and ethic responsibility to tell you what we need. We know that there's going to have to be adjustments. We already have sort of in our mind, okay, well, what if, what if, what if? We just would want that direction from the committee, so we can go back to the leadership team and assess, you know, kind of where do we need to make adjustments? Because there are a lot of choices to make within this budget, like any other budget, and we think that we've made our choices, and now we just need some input from the community to continue that process.
So, this is level funded. I'm sorry, service. If it was level funded, what would our district look like?
Well, if it was level funded, you'd be looking at, so that's what's great about this tool, and I'm sorry I didn't print it for you again, but if we were talking about level funding, so last year's budget was, the school portion of the tax request was $29 million, roughly, right? And so, if we were talking about level funded, you'd be looking at a $9 million budget reduction if you wanted there to be a 0% increase.
And what would that look like in our schools? Not to be.
Disaster.
In terms of, you're looking at teacher layoffs, or what would you be looking at?
Well, when you go back to looking at that pie chart of how is our budget divided, 60% of our budget is salary, 14, 13% is, you know, fringe benefits, that's 73% of our budget. The only way to reduce $9 million would be to massively reduce staff, and that would, that would disable the district.
About 100, over 100 teachers laid off, right?
Yeah.
Basically, close all the elementary schools, you had $9 million.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would not recommend that.
Yes.
For the record. But the thing, I think another way to think about that question, because you're thinking in the right way, is kind of where are the flex points? If we want to think about percents, if there's, if that's what matters most, is the percent increase over the previous year budget, if we think that's what resonates, 1% of our budget is about.
$350,000.
So, 1%, 350?
Yeah, 1% to 350, so.
And so.
Gross.
Yeah.
Right.
So, if you wanted it, you know, we just presented 12%. If you wanted it at, I'm just saying, 9, you're looking at 1.2 million, so.
And so, this lets you see sort of how it builds, right? So, this would be, you know, absolutely, like, this is level services refined. This is as low as you could go, and you wouldn't be accounting for some of those known unknowns in terms of that $400-plus thousand of, you know, pending placements. You then run into legal issues, so that costs money. So, as much as it might seem like, oh, well, yeah, let's just, let's just roll the dice and try it this year and hope that, you know, none of that happens, that would be, I think, really fiscally irresponsible, because we have lots of evidence over the years that shows that projections become reality and then some. But this shows you sort of how it builds, again.
Thank you.
I appreciate the breakdown you gave this year. This is actually new to me. I don't know, it might have been presented before, but not quite in the same way. I do love the school-by-school breakdown, where when you say, all right, if it's level funded, what does that mean? It means all three elementary schools. So, thank you for that. I know, being, having the conversation with both of you last spring, that we knew we were going into something tough, and, you know, I appreciate both of you hitting it head-on and really not holding any punches. I think this paints a very clear picture of where we are in our district and, you know, the reality of what's going on, where I do like the idea of a correction year. I don't like the idea of the number. I just don't want that to get misconstrued, but at some point, you, you know, you need to sort of face the reality of what the numbers really look like and stop trying to sort of hide, you know, hide things within the budget just for the sake of creating a certain number, you know, in the bottom line, because all you're doing is really just pushing the cost a little bit further down the road to the point where here we are. So, you know, thank you for that. I'm now looking forward to a couple of the meetings later on this month, but, you know, again, I want to thank you for this information, because I know I can now go into speaking with the community members and being very clear in what this costs and what this means, and, you know, this will help me defend, defend this budget. So, thank you.
And we really tried to equip you with two tools. One, you have the line-by-line analysis. The public has that line-by-line analysis. I would encourage folks to look back and say, what were we budgeting? What was the budget? What was the actual? And go line by line, and you'll see sort of where some of the shifts had to occur, just to reconcile some of that. But also, the document that I believe Vinnie emailed to you folks the other day, we tried to explain, you know, what are some of the notable changes in each line, so that you have the backstory behind it, and that way you can speak really clearly and smartly about, you know, what is in this budget, what's causing the increase, where's it coming from, what are we doing about it? That's all of the ongoing work and the conversations into next week as well. Any other questions? Just put this back up here for you.
Not really that chose 13% anyways?
Yes.
Now, we know that there was a $500,000 to $600,000 decrease to the towns, because last May we laid off the last payment on a little collection. So, that must mean that the, that service charges to the towns would be less next year. So, is that like a little savings?
Not really, because it was eaten up for the FY '20 budget, so.
Because that was a.
The last payment was in FY '19. There wasn't one in '20, so we were one year behind.
We had that benefit last year.
Well, that number didn't hurt quite as bad last year.
Right.
All right, so why don't we, who do we have a secretary of?
Assistant. So, I make a motion for that the Hamilton and the Regional School Committee approves a tentative FY '21 general fund expenditures budget of $37,867,528. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets and the amount of $37,454,275, and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of $413,253. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets have been allocated to the DESI-defined accounting according to the summary of DESI category chart included in this budget presentation.
Can I get a second?
Yeah.
So, I just want to tie into your new, we are not locked into this budget. I think it's the important part, too. This is a tentative budget, and this is part of the process that needs to happen as part of the regional agreement within the town, so this is just our working number. That's what we're voting on tonight. And in this case, tonight, do we need 2/3 of the floor of who's in attendance, or 2/3 of the entire committee?
I believe it's 2/3 of those in attendance.
Correct. All right. So, okay, so that sort of changes anything, but again, this isn't the final number, this isn't the binding number, this isn't necessarily the number that's going to town meeting. This is the number we're starting at to then begin the workshops next week, the joint committee meetings in a few weeks, and then send these guys back into the lab to finagle down, you know, however we see fit. So, I just think that's important to clear.
Right, and so, I imagine we're going to come back with a very different number? Or somewhat different number?
It will be different. It just depends on choices, and I think that's where the work will really happen in the subcommittee. There's lots of conversations that should happen, and we should assess the implications of each decision, and I think next week, hearing from principals and leadership team members directly will give you a really different insight than what we're doing here today because of just time, frankly. And then we have a subcommittee meeting planned for the 21st, leading up to our joint meeting on the 29th, and then we have also a public hearing on the 22nd, which will give us some input in terms of community priorities. And then we have another subcommittee on February 4th, which is where we will prepare the final recommendation that will come to you on the 12th. You'll have all of that information the Friday before you're asked to vote on that at the latest, if that helps.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, so I don't need a roll call for this, right?
You should.
I should. Jean?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ty? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so, you know.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. A lot of, a lot of work. We still, we still have a lot of work to do, but thank you for everything you've done so far.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to go over there, but the approval for the rollover of bands. You just, you missed it up here, don't you?
Just one quick comment before I start. You know, my 20 years as school committee and 9 years as treasurer, I've seen a lot of budget presentations. And to me, this was the most understandable one that I have seen. Also the prettiest one, too. But, and-
That's directed at you, Vinnie.
Working in the office, I can see how much time that has been spent on this budget. Last year, I was here around January, and we sold bands of bond anticipation notes in the amount of $850,000 for the winter fire suppression system. And they would do, and it was budgeted that come this year, we would pay off $125,000 of the bands and rewrite the bands. And that's what we're doing now. We're paying off $185,000, $125,000, plus $10,000 we're paying back that we didn't spend. Of the 850,000, we only spent 840,000. So we're reducing the band by $135,000. Some people ask, why don't we go to bond? Usually, when we take out a band, we go to bond. But bond council advises that when bands are under $1 million, it's very difficult to sell them as bonds, to transfer them into bonds. And the cost is much more expensive, because you tend not to get as good interest rates on a, on the million-dollar bond, because not many people are, as many people are interested as a bond that's one or two million dollars. Now, if in the, if in the future, before this one is paid off, there's more capital spending that's going to be done, and the district has to borrow more money, what's left on this, if you decide, can be added to that one. You can either, you know, keep paying this one off by itself and having another one, or you can add the balance of this one to the next one that you, that you get. So today, the bonds were sold. And on the third page that I have attached, it's just a summary of who bid, what they bid, what was their interest rate? Did they pay any premium? Because some, often, bonds, you get a premium for the bonds, because they want the bonds that much, they basically turn around and sell it. So as you can see, the company, Oppenheimer, they had an interest rate of 2%, which was a little bit higher than the 175 and the 180, but they pay us a premium of $3,700, which brings their net interest down to 10,005, which is the lowest that we have. So that's the one that will, bond council will automatically recommend, that you take one, the one that's going to cost you the less net. And so that's, that's what is on the motion. And this is a multi-part motion, as many of you have seen it before. But as I have commented before, when I, when I signed, when I read the motion for the middle school, high school, back 20-something years ago, 30-something years ago, it was four pages long. It was much longer. They actually have cut it down. So if the assistant treasurer will start to read the motion, and you take, one, two, three, four, you take four separate votes on each, on each part of the motion, and then the secretary or just assistant secretary signs to confirm that that's what the vote was, and she also confirmed that this was done in an open public, open meeting. All the school committee members were notified, and there was a quorum present.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dawn. I, the district assistant secretary of the school committee, the committee of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District, Massachusetts, the district, certified that a meeting of the committee held January 8, 2020, of which meeting all members of the committee were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were passed as indicated below. All of which appear upon the official record of the committee in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of the 715,000, 100,000, 2.0% general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the district dated January 23, 2020, and payable January 22, 2021 to Oppenheimer &amp; Company Incorporated, at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $3,718. Yays?
All those in favor? All those opposed, you're in favor? All right. This didn't need to be a roll call, correct?
What?
Does it need to be a roll call, correct?
No, it doesn't. But you might want to do it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a roll-
Why don't we go roll call, just in case? Jean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Ty?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 2, 2020, and the final official statement dated January 8, 2020, each in such form as may be approved by the district treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
And this official statement is about an 80-page document. It has financial information for Hamilton, for Wenham, and for the district, plus a lot like, I get a lot of the information from Vinnie, because it has different, you know, transportation costs, number of employees, all that sort of stuff. And that happens every year, because we have bonds outstanding that they have to do it for every year.
Thank you, Dawn. Jean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Further voted that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the district treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures, in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes.
I do this in conjunction with the bond council and the bond advisors that we use, who happen to be the same ones who've been using for almost 30 years, and the same people, which makes it interesting. And one of the main things on this is, if we were, this makes the bands tax-exempt interest. If we were to lease a building, you know, not just for one night meeting or anything, or lease a portion of a building, in this case, the Winter Building, then the interest would not be tax-exempt. So that's basically the major one that is, is in here, that covers that.
All right. Jean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Peter? And I'm a yes.
Further voted that each member of the committee, the district assistant secretary, and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
And tomorrow morning, a messenger will deliver a big stack of papers to me, that Michelle and myself will have to put some signatures on in the next week or so.
Great, thank you. Jean?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerks of each of the member towns of Hamilton and Wenham, Massachusetts, together the town clerks, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal buildings in which the offices of the town clerks and the district assistant secretary are located, or in accordance with an approved alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 (for) at least 48 hours, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law C-30A, pages 18 to 25, as amended.
There's no vote required on that one.
That's it? Okay.
And if, Michelle, you can just sign that and give it to me, and I'll, I'll go send it to the bond advisors, so they'll have those papers free tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Dawn.
See you next year.
Thank you, Dawn.
I'll let you know. I'll let you know. I'm going to go.
All right, up next on the agenda is just our sort of running superintendent search. I know tomorrow, there's a community at-large meeting at 7:00 in the high school library, and we still are open for accepting letters of interest for anyone who would like to join the search committee. I believe that goes until the 10th. Is that going to Dorothy or Michelle Bailey?
It goes to the 10th.
Michelle Bailey.
Michelle Bailey, and, yeah, all right. So anyone who is interested, I know we've gotten some interest in the past few days, but anyone who's still interested, if you want to send your letter of interest to Michelle Bailey, it is open until the 10th. Anything else?
If you missed the focus groups, you still have time to do the survey, if you get it done by tomorrow.
Great, thank you, Vinnie.
What time is the community at-large meeting? 7:00 PM at the high school library.
Oh, the high school?
Yeah. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
And the school committee does have a meeting with Dorothy.
Like, next week sometime?
I believe it's next week. It's going to be about an hour, two, an hour and a half, so.
What time?
I'll tell you in a second.
I think it's, is it the 16th? You know that.
We're going to be spending a lot of time together.
Oh, at 7:00?
Yeah.
On the 16th?
Yeah.
Do we have a master list of all the dates of all of our meetings?
We do, I don't know if it's in this packet, but we can email it.
Post it on my fridge.
We can email it to you tomorrow. So my calendar, the next two weeks, is all meetings, every night. I just have no idea where I need to be that night. I just know I have stuff to do.
It'll take me too long to put it in my Google Calendar.
All right, but I'll email that.
Yeah, I'm definitely not clear about the dates for the meetings.
I'll ask Janelle to send calendar invites. Is that helpful for everybody? And the refrigerator list?
Refrigerator documents.
The superintendent search definitely is laid out like that. There is a document for that. But Ty, just so you know, this is just sort of the busy, tricky part. Like, you literally jumped in to the deep end, wearing like cement shoes.
It's a nice walk.
Welcome to the committee.
This is beyond jumping into the fire. But we will definitely try and clarify, you know. The workshops are helpful. I wouldn't say that they'd be mandatory if you couldn't make it, but I think you'll get a lot of information out of those, just based off of some of the workshops we've already had this, this fall.
Because we have budget workshops, we have superintendent search, search meetings going on, we have town meetings, so it'd be nice if it was all-
In one spot.
My life was laid out in front of me.
And if you like, we could, you and I could probably get together offline and grab a cup of coffee or something, and just sort of catch up to speed on everything.
Great.
All right.
Sounds good.
Happy, always, always down for a cup of coffee. So, all right, up next is accepting an ed fund grant. So this is the $5,000 for the biotech course that was mentioned earlier in the budget review that, excuse me.
Yeah, just thanks to John Koch and the ed fund for, for John for presenting the grant and for the ed fund for approving it. So I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation of $5,000 from the Hamilton-Wenham Ed Fund on, for the biotech course, which will be offered in the 2020-21 year.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you so much, Ed Fund. You do, I don't know what we would do without you. Thank you personally. All right, up to our next fun topic, the field trip to Peru. I don't know if everyone, everyone had an opportunity to check their email. There was some correspondence back and forth about, Kevin Sanno addressed the concern that was brought up about the-
Travel advisory?
Travel advisory, I was looking for that word. And I thought the explanation was, personally, very suitable and clear.
And we've also put a calendar reminder, per the request of the committee, for 30 days prior to the trip, to revisit that as a school committee. And Kevin will work with families to ensure that they know what the, what the plans are. And I believe she's also planning a parent night to answer any questions folks may have.
Make a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wenham School District School Committee accept or approves the 2021 World Strides Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School trip to Peru, April 14, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, you can end this. Excellent. All right, on to the superintendent's report. We're actually right on time.
Yes, just a couple of things. It's the first meeting of the month, so I wanted to just bring the enrollment data to you, so that you could look and see. We're holding pretty steady at 1,837 students, two less students than last month, and we continue to monitor this data. What, one thing I will bring together for our February meeting is sort of the historical enrollment data, year over year, so you can have a close look at that. Ty asked that question earlier, and I'd like to put in a nice overview for you, so you guys can all have that.
Did you ever see the video of the model for the visiting?
Yes.
All right, maybe you want to see that?
Yep, yeah. One of the things, Ty and I met earlier today, and one of the things I'm preparing for him is, per our policy, all links, live links to all of the things listed out in terms of the orientation packet, so I thought that would be a nice way to have it all in one spot.
I liked that they were such a great presentation.
Yeah. Okay, and then you may remember doing this last year, or seeing this report last year, we are a member of the North Shore Education Consortium. Being a part of that collaborative allows us to place students in specialized programs at a reduced tuition rate, and each year, they provide a beautiful annual report. So I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look at it, and I just wanted to make sure that the full committee had it, and that it was available to the public. Being a member of the collaboratives is just a win-win for our kids and for our communities. So it's been really a great experience being- a win-win for our kids and for our communities. So it's been really a great experience being a member of that board. I actually also get to serve on the policy subcommittee. So we recently updated some policies around facility animals, therapy animals, and sales animals in the schools as that's becoming more popular. So it was a good experience. And then lastly, I just wanted to make the committee aware of a grant that we applied for and that we will be, we were accepted into. This is the Essex County Learning Community. We haven't had our first meeting yet, but we are hopeful that this will allow us to collaborate with colleagues in the region and maximize professional development opportunities as we continue to strive to improve learning outcomes for our kids. And so you have all that information there and just wanted to make you aware.
My chair report, the only thing I really want to do is officially introduce Ty Prima to the board and really just thank you for joining. Like I said, you are jumping in at a confusing time, but you'll learn a lot about our schools and our district and everything that really goes into, you know, how we teach the kids in this, you know, and take care of the kids in this community. Excuse me, I know that you have a daughter in, son? Son in Bukeur, I'm sorry. So Bukeur families are obviously the best in the community.
No bias.
After Cutler.
But yeah, I just wanted to, you know, thank you for, again, for really jumping in with both feet.
Thank you. Everyone has been really welcoming, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Have we, have we put you on a subcommittee yet?
Not yet.
All right, just wait.
I don't know. I, I think we could sort of let him slide just because of everything else that's going on.
I got nominated acting treasurer, or acting treasurer at my first meeting.
Oh, you do budgets?
Yeah.
See, I didn't even do budgets and I was nominated for acting treasurer, assistant treasurer. All right, those are the days. All right, on to the community report. Capital Financial Planning Subcommittee. Sorry, Jean.
So on page one seventeen of your packet, you have a letter from MSBA. If people remember, we had submitted a SOI, Statement of Interest, to the MSBA to take a look at potentially doing something with the Cutler and Winthrop schools. That has gone through a couple rounds of process with MSBA, and we heard back in early December that we were, that we weren't moving on in the process for the two applications we submitted, the two SOIs we submitted. So the letter you have here is from MSBA documenting that. If you also recall, we had submitted a, the school committee had signed a letter sort of advocating for the two schools prior to the meeting that they had. So what it does, it leaves us with a, an opportunity and also a challenge with regard to what we want to do with Cutler and Winthrop, and what we want to do with re submitting NSOI for 2020, for reconsideration. I think that we'll take that up closer to when the application opens up, application process opens up.
It just opened today.
It did?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have a couple months.
Okay. So what I would suggest then is that we take this back to the subcommittee to make a recommendation to the full committee about what we want to do and perhaps how we want to frame the, the application for Winthrop, and also Cutler, I guess. But I feel the Cutler SOI was pretty strong by itself. The Winthrop one was not.
So I, I just wanted to, before we bring that back to the subcommittee, really just reiterate that you can definitely bring back with you, you know, that when we first submitted our first SOI, it'd be two years ago now for just Cutler, that we knew that this was gonna be a process.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I think that we were saying ten, twelve years, two years ago. I like to think we're two years into the process now. You know, so just, it's discouraging to get the, you know, rejection letter. Excuse me, this would hurt more than last year.
Well, actually, I don't know. It's, it's tough because they went through the tour.
It's never good to get rejected. It's never feels good to get rejected, dude.
And Tom, Tom did say, who was at the meeting on December eleventh, said that some schools had been there, there was their fifth try. So it's, it's, this is a process, so.
I, I think we, we stand, we're sort of in a good place too, because now with, you know, the change of administration, we have fresh eyes looking at our, you know, and we can just sort of see a few things like, oh, you know what, we left this out, or maybe if we just sort of enhanced this part, that it's a good opportunity, you know, to really just continue to grow and make our case stronger.
Yeah.
One of the things that we'll talk about more in depth in subcommittee is Vinnie, Tom Gary, and I had a debrief conversation with MSBA to just sort of learn sort of how closely were they looking at us, and we know that they took a, we were part of the more in-depth analysis piece of it, and there could be some strategy to, including Bukeur in the next SOI process. So we're looking at all of our elementary schools. So we'll talk a little bit about the pros and cons of that. And also, we have, we believe that having a strong educational plan, which is in our capital budget this year, will also make us more competitive, because it'll show that there's community engagement and community investment around it. And one of the things we would want to avoid is getting invited into the core program and bringing it to the voters and having it not be supported. So that, that investment in this capital budget will really help us, I believe, be more competitive as well.
Yeah, it's a very good point. I think the, so, you know, not being able to move forward does pose, again, some challenges with regard to how we want to stage some of the capital requests that we have, right? So that's the big factor. You know, I think we also learn, at least with the Winthrop, that current physical building layout doesn't really line well with the education that's actually happening in the schools, and that wasn't actually included in the SOI. So I think there are, are other improvements that we can probably make to the SOI specifically for Winthrop that we'll, that we'll think through in, as we get closer to the, well, I guess, since the application already opened up, process opened today, they will, we'll need to think through how to do that, how to expedite some of that thinking and documentation. When does it close? Do you know, Julian?
I want to say it was April. Do you know the?
April, okay.
Early April.
The eighth or something.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, so we want to be thoughtful about how we want to approach this.
Do you think that's gonna be on the agenda for the twenty-first meeting?
Well, moving to that, so, so there are three things that I wanted to include on the meeting on the twenty-first, so if anybody's interested in attending. Obviously, continued budget work, preparation for the joint meeting on the twenty-ninth with the select boards and the FinComs, and I also wanted to give people an update on the conversation I had with our, our district council around the MOUs. Just keep that process moving forward and make sure that the turf committee knows that we're not just languishing. We are moving forward with that particular process at least. Again, the voters of the two towns will need to approve, you know, appropriating money to, to the project. But I think we could probably take it up on, take the SOI up on the fourth. Our meetings have been running very long, and I think burnout is a potential hazard.
Definitely want to thank you for that. I sort of knew and hoped going into this year that this committee was going to be doing a lot of work and.
Yeah, and it needs to. I mean, you need to be able to chew gum and walk at the same time, so, you know, we need to focus on a lot of things.
You know, you guys have been doing a great job, though, so thank you. I'd like to be a fly on the wall.
Yeah, well, again, you know, any, so Ty, if you're interested, you can come by. You can't participate as a actual committee member, but you can sort of sit in and observe. Sometimes we do have other members of the elected boards attend, or at least the Hamilton Capital Committee attend. It's a good conversation, so if you are interested in some of the additional capital requests that we, that we're putting forward, you can hear some more about that. There's also, again, budget work that we'll go into more detail and more depth, so. That's, that's it for the capital committee.
Excuse me. All right. So up next is the policy subcommittee. We have a first reading.
Peter?
What's that?
Peter?
Yeah. Dr. Kukunberger, Michelle Bailey, Dorothy Pressler of the MASC, MASC and I are continuing to plow through hundreds of pages of policy. If you look in, in the, in the exhibits, it's page one nineteen to page two hundred and thirty-four. So in those hundred and fifteen pages, we, we're aligning our policy with the MASC's policy, and we're choosing the one that's clearer, makes more sense, more relevant, more explicit. There's nothing controversial in there. What's that?
So I didn't realize that we were sort of picking and choosing which we like better are existing, or the MS.
So what we're really doing is reviewing every, we have some policies that aren't necessary, so some of those are being removed, and you see them redlined here. Other policies where we have one and MASC, MASC has one, but there might, like, our language might be confusing or their language might not fit our needs. So we're not actually writing the policies each and every time, but we might, you know, adjust a word or a phrase or add to either ours or theirs, but we're kind of always looking at ours comparative to theirs and saying what best serves our community.
Yeah, we're not making any major changes to policy. We are just aligning them, the language.
Yeah, looking at it online is much easier than, I find, than the paper copy.
We also often look at other districts as well. So if there's something where we're like, hmm, I wonder what other districts are saying about this or how they're stating the policy, we're constantly referencing others as well.
I'm definitely gonna try and get back on policy this break. I miss being on this committee. All right.
Do, do, I need to make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School, District School Committee approves the first reading of the school committee policy C.
Second.
All those in favor? Is unanimous?
And do we have to do it for E as well?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Nope.
I make a motion that the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District School Committee accept the first reading of the school committee policy E.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, so what's in the packet now is, actually, Peter, I don't know if you can give me, can you give us like highlights of any significant changes to the E section? I mean, I know there's, there's a lot.
There's, again, there's nothing controversial. There's nothing, we're not changing policy. We're not adding policy. We are just really aligning our language to make it clearer. I wouldn't say there's any, any drastic changes. I would just say it's more of an alignment.
I mean, I guess the question is, do we want to make any changes? Does the committee want to make any changes to the policies, right?
Well, I mean, so this, therein lies the rub, right?
Yeah.
Because we're technically reviewing all of these, and we have a three-year cycle, three-year review cycle, right? And since I've been on here, I know we've gone through the first, you know, half of the alphabet once, you know, making small changes here and there. It, it's, in order to do some changes, because there's some stuff that I saw that, you know, maybe we could have a bigger, larger discussion on. It, it's tough to say, is it now the time to do it? I guess, I guess the question is, if you came up with something, or I think the solution is, came up with something that's time-sensitive?
Yep.
Now would be the time. I, I don't know. I, I sort of can, I, I'm on both sides. I'm teetering the line a little on, on that. It's like I said, I just happened to open randomly the other day to, I think, the school launch policy. There was a few things in there that oddly enough set me off that I'm like, oh, I think this could be a larger discussion.
Well, and remember too, that although the policy subcommittee, even before my time, has been reviewing and bringing to you sections, they're waiting to publish all of the revised sections until the end. So even after second reading, they're not being published right away. That's gonna, there's gonna be like a, a scheduled release in the fall, I believe. But in terms of this section, and the way for you to have input as the full committee is when it comes to you in your packet for first reading, like now would be a good time to say, oh, I noticed on page two oh two, we're eliminating our existing policy and we're adopting the MASC policy. And you can see that very clearly by like what's redlined. And you might have, I'd also like to see this added to that policy, and you can push that back to subcommittee between first and second reading.
Yeah, I know. I'll admit that I, I did not do my homework, and I did not read all the policies in section E, but you know, just as a quick glance, you know, there's policy on security cameras, student transportation, student transportation, private vehicles, all of these have been brought up in prior.
Like the private vehicle is one we just did, so I imagine that, that wording is the, the.
Yeah, I thought so too, but the date, at least on my voice, the date on the thing, maybe, maybe I'm looking at the old version, but like.
What page are you on?
Two twenty-two?
What's, you talking about student transportation and private vehicle?
Yeah.
I'm on page, there's one on one eighty.
So on page two twenty-two, that is our old policy that says it was adopted in September twenty fourteen. It doesn't have a review date. We didn't take, we looked at the MASC policy, but we chose to just add some language to our existing policy and didn't just accept their policy entirely.
Yeah, I know, I know that this one in particular came up, and we had a big, long discussion about the policy, like the appropriateness of when and who, and all that sort of stuff. I just don't, I mean, obviously, I went through a first reading to get to, at some point, except we had a discussion about it. I just don't know, I just don't remember, you know, where it went from there.
Do you remember what the specific issue was?
The specific issue revolved around after-school transportation for sports teams.
Okay.
But I think that's what we considered. You can see that it's only, if it meets the, the following conditions.
Well, the, the issue came up as sort of like, you know, if, if, can a, can a coach take, rather than rent a bus, can a coach take a couple of athletes to a game, meet, match in their private vehicle, right?
Yeah. So as the policy reads, the answer to that would be yes, but they have to have prior approval, and they have to provide the proof of insurance and a valid driver's license, and the parents or guardians also have to.
Yeah, I know. And again, my memory fails me right now because I don't remember how we landed. It sounds like it's right, but I just don't remember.
But I also remember there being the gray area of, since we don't have facilities on campus, right, like, you know, everyone hopping into, in a Johnny's car to head down to baseball practice at Pat and, you know.
Yeah.
And there was also the question if a child, a student is left behind, can the, can a coach drive them home in a private vehicle?
The answer would be no, unless there was prior approval and we had all that evidence.
Right, or can a parent pick up their kid at the match instead of having to come back to the school with the coach, right? The coach drives a couple, a couple of athletes. Or even, actually, the other one was a teacher taking a couple of kids down to the state house for a thing, right? I remember that was, that was another example, as opposed to, well, I guess you could take the commuter rail too, but like, the point is like, so I just remember like this one in particular, again, security, the other thing about security cameras is that, does that then align with, if we move forward with security infrastructure improvements, would that align with whatever Tom? would that align with whatever Tom would suggest? Right, so anyways, I guess, again, I didn't do my homework, so I apologize.
And I don't remember all the details either, but I do remember Michelle Bailey had the notes in front of her from that discussion, and all of that was taken into account.
Yeah.
That's a good question about the security cameras. So I just made a note to ask our director of facilities to review that.
Yeah.
That page.
Yeah. Again, I just wish I had, I wish I'd been more diligent in my duties as a...
So there's so much time in today, man.
Still have time between first and second reading.
Right, yes.
And I don't know, Peter, well, that's a separate question.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Next meeting date?
Oh.
Yeah.
I do not know because...
I'm sure it probably is, because the policy should be gentle enough.
Situation. I don't know. Yeah, it's not in my fridge.
All right.
No, no, it's just, yeah.
So...
I just came to observe. I have a student, a daughter going to Buick in September.
Yeah, it's a place to be.
Down any of the elementary schools.
Alumni.
Show up at April 4th, tell meeting to vote. Show up and tell meeting on April 4th to vote.
Sure, we'll just think you know what goes on.
Thank you.
It's a small town, you'll know everything.
I'm sure.
Come back, bring your friends.
Thank you.
So do we vote?
Yeah.
Go to vote?
So, all those in favor? All right, now the negotiations subcommittee.
So we are starting, our next meeting is going to be February 4th, and just preparing for the next round of contracts that are coming up in the fall. So we just want to be prepared and well-informed and serve our staff of the district well.
I'm just noticing this says 4:00, is it 4:00 or 4:30?
4:00. Oh, 4:30.
4:30, okay.
Sorry, 4:30 in the district offices. It'll always be the first Tuesday of the month at 4:30.
Excuse me, now the consent agenda. Does anyone want to poll anything?
Okay, I make a motion that we, the Hamilton Wenham School District School Committee approves the consent agenda put forth in this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then up next is approving the prior meeting minutes, July 31st executive session.
I make a motion that the Hamilton Wenham School Committee approves the executive session minutes with amendments from the July 31st, 2019 meeting, as discussed at last meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? For the record, that was five. Any topics for future meetings?
Yes. I think we need to address the composting and recycling issue at the high school, considering what's happening in Hamilton.
We had someone in to speak about that.
It was in the high school as a student-run organization, and it fell to the wayside because you couldn't get anyone to join the recycling compost.
So we have a meeting planned. I met with both town administrator and town manager to discuss sort of the townwide issues around that. And Tom Gary, myself, Danielle Pertucci, some students from the environmental club, I believe, as well as the principals are coming together. We were actually supposed to meet today, but I was out of district at another meeting to assess the current state of who is composting where and kind of how we can partner with the towns to move forward. So I don't know if we're rescheduled before the next meeting, but we can certainly provide an update on that.
Great.
Who's the director of food services?
Catherine Donovan.
Catherine Donovan, yeah, she's part of it as well, yeah.
Because I think, I believe she came to us before, sort of...
I will say, just as a little sidebar, as a booster parent many years ago and running a banquet and trying to get the parents to compost was a nightmare. And these are adults.
Yeah.
So that's my, and I'm a 100% composter and recycler at home. And I, my husband and I model good behavior and forget about my kids.
Well, that kind of busts our theory. We're hoping that if we really get the kids on board, they'll educate their parents.
So it just, I think there was an issue with sort of the contamination, how quickly it is, it can be contaminated, and then who's gonna go through?
Oh, simple, right, right. And then you have the, never, this, we'll discuss that later.
Discussion for another time.
Michelle, would you like to join us at the meeting?
I'd love to join you.
Okay.
All right, anything else? So at this time, gonna...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So at previous meetings, we talked about formative assessment, and I chose not to present my progress towards my goals this time because we were focusing on the budget. Would you like that on the 22nd or the 5th?
Where do you think it makes the most sense?
I'm trying to think.
I think we can sort of give the latitude to say...
I'd say sooner than later, just to, because it's been a while. So we need to, front and center.
So I'll plan that for the 22nd.
And I think, what does the agenda look like for the 22nd?
That's what it is.
I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I know we've been adding some things. There's some budget forecasts, some line transfers, right, budget transfers. We'll look at it and make sure we're not creating too long of a meeting.
I think the 22nd would probably make more sense than the 4th.
Okay.
I just think we're gonna have bigger fish to fry on the 4th. Not that you're not a big fish, but I just think that...
All right.
More large-ticket items.
Okay. All right, I'll have that ready for you.
All right. Now, are we... All right, so at this point, I want to adjourn to executive session. Purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Hamilton Wenham Education Association. To return to public session, I need a roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We could cut the... Yeah, for about 10 minutes.
Thanks, Todd.
Should we do it here, or should we move to the other room?
We don't have an audience.
What's that?
We don't have an audience.
As long as you're sure that you're not on camera.
Right, I was just gonna say... All right, and we're back. So the final thing on our agenda for the evening is to vote on the sidebar letter. Excuse me, I want to make a motion.
Yes, let me just find it now. Keeping everyone in suspense, sorry.
You're gonna push over nine-thirty?
Yeah, I can't find it, do you have it there?
Yeah.
Here you go.
Thank you. I make a motion that the Hamilton Wenham School Committee approves the sidebar agreement presented to the school committee from the Hamilton Wenham Education Association to change the wording in appendix C, extended responsibilities, stipend schedule, page fifty-one to fifty-two.
Second.
Do a roll call, just to keep it even all night. So Jean?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Okay, and just to note that this will be added as an appendix.
So at this point, so I want to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn at...
Nine-twenty?
Nine-twenty.
Second.
All those in favor? Woo-hoo, we're ahead of schedule.